So we're gonna move forward. And if this happens again, we'll deal with it.
Yep. Sorry, everybody.
It's okay. It's okay. And so we're moving on to number six, new business. And the first item is considered the 2020-2022 municipal budget. Dino, would you like to? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council and members of the public. I'm very pleased to present to you the proposed municipal budget for fiscal years 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022. The work on this budget has been done during the pandemic period. It started a little bit before that, but predominantly has been done during the pandemic. The budget reflects the austerity measures that the council took and the staff took in the last three months. And our ending fund balance will reflect that. And the budget for the next two years also reflects our thinking on what we anticipate being a pandemic-induced recession continuing into at least the first half of the coming fiscal year and perhaps longer, with a slight improvement in the economic outlook in the second year of the two-year budget. The Budget Committee comprised of Councilmember Getzel, Mayor Kerr, former Councilmember Allian, and staff met several times to review the budget. And the budget that you see before you has been commented on several times by the Budget Committee. Kim and I have spent, I think it's fair to say, many, many hours drilling into it and ensuring that we have confidence in our numbers, in our assumptions, and in the picture that we're portraying to the council as well as the public about our fiscal situation. So I'll start with what we anticipate to be our ending fund balance before we even roll into the next fiscal year. We anticipate our ending fund balance, well, our current ending fund balance is approximately $665,309. That reflects the austerity measures taken in the last three months to tighten our belts, slow spending, avoid costs where we could. And of that balance, staff is recommending that 310,000 be, continue to be restricted for capital projects and transferred across fiscal years into next year to complete the CIP projects that were approved this fiscal year but not executed because of the concerns around the pandemic, that being the paving project, the solar panel project for City Hall, and the sewer design project with Seaside County Sanitation District for South Boundary Road. Staff also recommends replenishing the Economic Uncertainty Reserve with $174,000 that was allocated from the Economic Uncertainty Reserve at mid-year to the city budget. We recommend putting that back in, which would bring our Economic Uncertainty Reserve from $1,359,567 to $1,533,567. This leaves an estimated surplus of somewhere in the neighborhood of $181,000, which staff recommends waiting for the completion of our annual audit in the fall before making any additional decisions regarding dispersal of that money or any additional money that may become available as our audit finalizes our ending fund balance. So I want to point that out, that the city did a pretty solid job really putting the brakes on spending in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year, deferring capital projects to the next fiscal year, and allowing the replenishment of the Economic Uncertainty Reserve. Which brings me to the proposed budget. The proposed budget for the coming fiscal year, the city is proposing a budget of $4,156,552 in revenues, which represents a 17% decrease in revenues from the current fiscal year, again reflecting the pandemic-induced recession impacts on our TOT, sales tax, cannabis tax, and other revenue sources in terms of permits and so on. The proposed expenditures for the coming fiscal year are $3,945,534, which represents a 21% decrease in expenditures for the coming fiscal year. We cut deep, 20% reduction in expenses for the coming year is a pretty significant cut. The, we managed that reduction without furloughs, without pay reductions for current staff, and in keeping our core team on. And I'm proud of that, on the one hand, because surrounding jurisdictions are making really austere cuts based on their budget pictures. I will say that, to a person, your employees understand and support the foregoing of any COLA, cost of living increase, for the coming fiscal year, any pay increases. And I appreciate that very much. That applies to all of our employees, including myself. The second year of the two-year budget you'll see represents about a 4% increase in revenue. So we anticipate a slight improvement in our economic picture to an anticipated revenue base of about $4,317,000, but continues to keep a close cap on expenditure growth. Our expenses remain down, and they actually are protected to decrease by 1% in the second year of the fiscal budget to $3,910,813. So that's sort of the context within which the budget was developed, the big picture of the two-year numbers. And now I'll go into a little bit more detail in the first year, this coming year of the two-year budget. Your revenues, we're anticipating a downturn in sales tax due to the pandemic. We're also anticipating a significant decrease in cannabis and TOT, as well as a discontinuation of our FORA caretaker grant because of FORA sunsetting on June 30th. That brought in roughly $143,000 a year in anticipated revenue, and that will no longer be happening. We're also anticipating a reduction in our police contract as a result of the department reducing overall costs of running the police department in the coming year by close to $240,000. And that's a testament to Chief, his command staff, and all the officers looking at how we can significantly reduce our operating costs during the pandemic period to help the city through the worst of it. On the expenditure side, we're decreasing significantly through completing the payoff of FORA loans. So this year, the city completed the payoff of $552,000 alone with FORA and saved several hundred thousand dollars in interest, as we've discussed in previous agenda reports. You know, again, thanks to some great negotiating with FORA by Councilmember Gagliotti and discipline from the council to enter into that agreement and really drive the payoff, and we're done. I mean, we've paid it off this month. So we will not have a $552,000 expenditure next year because we paid that off. We'll have a decrease in salary and benefits, and that is made up of several components. One important component is that our workers' compensation insurance premium is decreasing significantly. That's a testament to our ability as a city staff to stay healthy, avoid accidents and injuries, and improve our year-on-year performance in terms of workers' comp's claims, which then starts to accumulate and reflect in our premium. So we're seeing a significant decrease in our workers' comp premium, as well as a freeze on pay, no COLA. We're also maintaining one vacant full-time police position, as reflected in the Position Control List in your council packet. It shows five of six for police officer positions in the coming fiscal year, six of six in the fiscal year after that. And the department is going to operate with reserves and overtime, as well as its more solid, frankly, full-time staff because of the terrific work of really growing a cohesive cohort that's all present for duty. As you recall, we've had people for significant periods of time collecting pay, pending investigations of various kinds over the last couple of years, and that's drawn on us. So that's not happening. There's also a decrease in outside services due mostly to reductions in our contractual services. And finally, we are foregoing new capital projects in the coming fiscal year. So while we're shifting 310 across fiscal years from this year to next year to complete the projects council has already approved, the street paving project for 200, the solar panels for 80, and the sewer pipeline design, we are not requesting in next year's budget the normal $200,000 for street paving and maintenance that we normally would. So we're realizing that savings next year, and of course, deferring that maintenance, which is, it's a non-trivial matter, but the times call for it. The assumptions for the following fiscal year after that see us basically flat on property and sales tax, a slight increase in airport contract costs as we resume our normal fee schedule for the police contract, and an increase in payroll and benefits on the expense side as we bring on one full-time officer and consider cost of living increases for the staff. And we also have built in $200,000 streak project for the second year to continue with our important work of maintaining our public infrastructure. An important point that was brought up by the mayor to us today, and I've discussed it, we've discussed it with Chief as well as City Attorney. The police services contract language in the fee adjustment does not foresee a reduction in the fee charged to the airport, even when we have a reduction in police services costs. And so one of the recommendations from the City Attorney to council and staff will recommend this, either as part of the motion approving the budget or as a separate standalone motion, is that the council consider a simple one-page amendment to the contract and authorize the city manager to execute it, essentially codifying what's in the budget for the police fee this coming year and the understanding of returning to the normal fee schedule and cost for the second year. And what that amendment will do is protect the city against any potential litigation that we consider it highly unlikely, but it was a great catch by the mayor, and we had a little bit of time to brainstorm about it today, and that's our suggestion. As we walk through the rest of the staff report, I want to just point out a couple of things that really highlight the terrific staff work by Kim in preparing this budget. And if you'll move with me to the actual budget, the two-year budget, and move through that budget, it's five pages. Move through it to the fifth page. This is new information from our previous budgets that Kim has outlined for the good of the council, the good of the public, and also for staff to use. On that page, you'll see at the top, it says restricted funds. And it delineates all of our restricted funds by category, including all of our gas tax, our Measure X, SB 1, and also captures the Measure X loan there, walks it across from this fiscal year to next fiscal year, proposed in the budget, to the following fiscal year. And I think that's just terrific work by Kim. It also outlines the CIP costs there, and it shows very clearly in this document the transfer, and this is something we did not do well last year, we're fixing that right here, the very clear transfer of the $310,000 for the capital projects across fiscal years into 2021. And that's shown in that table as well. Then below, in the lower half of this page, there is a detailed breakdown that would become the basis if we do a contract amendment for that, that explains the airport police services agreement and the contract costs. And it breaks it down by contract year, starting with the first contract year of 2018, 2019, where our contract costs were $1,032, this contract year, 2019, 2020. And it shows how we arrived at our current contract costs of $1,124,000. And then it shows exactly how we arrive at the reduced contract costs proposed in the budget of $1,300, I believe that's 662, but my glasses aren't good enough to read that detail. And so, and it shows the total for '21, '22, taking the contract cost back up, as stated in our initial letter by Chief to the airport, to $1,181,743. So that's a good detailed breakdown of our police services contract costs. And then at the bottom, and this is all, this is all new, all of the FORA funds that are coming to the city are captured in the budget. And so what you'll see at the bottom of this page is, and I'll just read from the top to the bottom, the amount of funds coming to the city for the intersection of General Jim Moore and South Boundary Road at $1,56,168, the amount of money coming to the cities of Delray Oaks and Monterey for the South Boundary Road project of $7,268,813, the amount coming to the city of Delray Oaks for South Boundary Road-related consulting and contracts, $518,564, and then finally, the Joint Facilities District Agreement funds for Habitat Management of $748,071. The total there is $9,591,616 of FORA funds coming to the city literally this week. We have, and I'll address this later in my city manager's report, have concluded all agreements, and those funds are literally being transferred by FORA. They went to the bank today and found that their bank didn't have the person on hand authorized to transfer that large a sum. So they're going back tomorrow and continuing the transfer of funds over to the city. So that's included in the budget. And it's separated out because we wanted to give you a year-to-year comparison that was a bit more apples-to-apples, rather than baking $9 million into this fiscal year and trying to compare that to last fiscal year. It would have really skewed the numbers and the picture. So that's why it's separated out. Walking to the resolution, the next resolution in your packet contains our salary schedule for the city. And you'll notice that the salary schedule is frozen with no increases. The resolution after that is the Position Control List for the city. This is the positions authorized to be hired in the city. And you'll see that for the coming fiscal year, we go from 15.5 positions to 14.5 positions. And then in the second year of the budget, we return to 15.5 positions. The .5 obviously being the part-time employee that council had authorized earlier in the year. There are various resolutions regarding our debt limit that are always included in the budget that follow that. And then the last, approaching the last, I'd like to highlight the fee schedule for the city and just tell you that the staff has not recommended any changes to any fees on the fee schedule. That's three pages there, and then that brings us to the memberships and contribution schedule, which is the last page of the budget packet. And I would just draw your attention to the far-right column, which is staff's recommendation, where FF stands for fully fund, and DNF stands for do not fund. And staff's recommendation to council this evening is that we fund all memberships, so the entire membership column there that sums to $14,312, plus one contribution for $1,669 to fund, to help fund the homeless shelter that CHS is spearheading and that Councilmember Lintel, the mayor, and I think we had public comment to this effect, have staunchly supported. And that's a, it's a small but meaningful contribution to that effort for regional, a potential regional solution to part of our enormous homeless problem. That brings the total recommendation in this schedule to $15,981. That is reflected in your budget. And the last thing I'll say before pausing for questions or comments is that, as presented, the budget provides the city with a surplus for the coming fiscal year, not as large as we've seen, obviously, in previous years, but still brings a modest surplus to the city. And lastly, this is our best work knowing what we know. And we're all prepared as a staff, and obviously, we'll be coming back to council as needed should the economy take a sharper turn down or stay down longer. We're fully prepared to come back to council and make suggestions about what to do then. But we, in this case, are not suggesting any expenditures out of the Economic Uncertainty Reserve. And so that remains as a backup for council should things get more dire. With that, I'll pause for questions. I'm happy to answer any you might have.
So let's go to the council. Sean.
Double muting. No, I'm very impressed by the budget and very impressed with the Budget Committee and what they've done. And, I mean, across all the jurisdictions in the county, we've got to be one of the healthier cities. And I'm just very proud of that. So no, I have no questions about this budget, and thank you, Dino, and thank you for the Budget Committee, for the work that you guys have done. And the staff for, you know, for digging, for taking the, or, you know, cutting into it and looking for places to economize. So thank you.
Louise.
Okay, my picture's frozen, but I guess my voice isn't. My only question is the contributions and membership of the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. I know that that is a nonprofit that helps all the communities do joint, kind of joint projects, and assist them with economic development and other things. So I'm not exactly 100% sure what our bang for the buck is for them.
Do you want me to try to answer the questions as they come? Then I'm pleased to do that. So, thank you. So, Councilmember Getzel, MBEP offers a range of services and networking opportunities for us. One of the best examples I can give you regarding what we're currently working with them on is they've got a housing program that that is trying to encapsulate some best practices, following state legislation, looking at what changes can be used or brought about to land use policies. And we've had several meetings with them that the mayor's participated in. And we're hoping that at some point in the future, when the dust settles from the FORA sunset flurry, and we get out the other side of some very hastily filed litigation at the moment, that we can pick back up with them and be the beneficiaries of some pretty good staff work that they're doing. That's just one example of how we're working with them.
Okay, thank you. Apparently, my video camera has died, but I'm still here.
Okay. Anything else, Louise?
No, thank you.
Okay. Pat.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate what John said. I like the budget. I think that the Budget Committee and staff have done an outstanding job. And Kim, what would we do without you? Anyway, I do thank you for all your hard work, and it turned out to be a good budget, and thank you so much.
Thanks, Pat. Kristen.
There we go. Yeah, this budget is excellent. The presentation is excellent. It's clear, it's concise, it's detailed, very conservative, very impressive. I really want to thank everybody for all the work they put into it. And I really like to thank staff for not taking a raise at this time. You just don't hear of that. And I admire all of you, and I thank you all for working together and for that sacrifice. Again, it's a great, this is a great, every year gets better and better. So thank you, Dino, for all your leadership, too.
All right, let's go out to the public. I see Ken Rutherford.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I guess I have some concern about the proposed amendment to the police contract that was discussed by Dino. And would just ask, you probably noticed, and put on the agenda before that's done, because I would like to research that and be heard on that issue. But with respect to this budget, I have two primary concerns. First of all, thank staff for the hard work that they've done. My two primary concerns, one is the one-time cost reduction to our police service contract with Monterey Airport in the amount of $149,000. And the second is the continued failure to include in our budget the $1.2 million debt the city has from the settling of a lawsuit with developers. I know that that came up last time, and it was indicated that the auditor said it's okay not to include that. But I think that it's not a full picture without including there somewhere, even with an asterisk at the bottom of the budget to indicate that the city still has on its books over a $1.2 million debt from that lawsuit. With respect to the $149,000 one-time cost reduction, I learned about that first when I attended the airport board meeting last week, where every one of the directors thanked Delray Oaks for the gift, they called it a gift to them. I think it was Director Sabo that inquired as to how this gift came about, and he was informed, and we were all informed, that Mr. LaPierre called our city staff, city manager, and requested any help we might be able to provide to them. And apparently, they went, our city went through the budget and the police budget and reduced our costs, and then passed on some of those savings to the airport in way of this proposed one-cost reduction. I have a problem with that because it's not consistent with the contract. But more importantly, there's a lot of things that Delray Oaks could do with $149,000 that we're giving to the airport. An airport that I will tell you has just received $12 million in CARES money from the federal government, and $11 million FAA grants over the last year for capital projects. Director Curcio said at last week's meeting, he reminded his board that the $149,000 from Delray Oaks, after thanking Delray Oaks on the record, would be just enough to cover the cost of demolishing one of the buildings. would be just enough to cover the cost of demolishing one of the buildings as part of their capital project. Delray Oaks has several capital projects that we need to fulfill. But I would also say that our staff has taken refused to take a cost of living raise. They should be given a bonus for the hard work that Kim and Karen do before this money goes to an airport that has $12 million of CARES funds. Much of it still remains. If our staff would attend the board meetings for the airport, they would see that they are in much better financial shape than Delray Oaks. We still have a $1.2 million debt, and we're giving away money to the airport. I do not think it's appropriate. Again, we can make our city more ADA compliant. We could start putting sidewalks in our city. There's $149,000 that could be gone towards paying down that debt. I think this city should look at the contract with the airport for the police services, follow that contract, not amend it. There is a true-up provision that will occur in October. If, in fact, our cost to them and our services are reduced, they will get the money at that time. There is no need for us, Delray Oaks, to be giving money to the airport. Everyone says that they're our neighbor, and we should be better neighbors. But I would remind you, this is a neighbor that continues to allow its tenants to violate noise and pattern flying restrictions of our city and disturb our way of life. A neighbor that but for our general plan and the insistence on residents to oppose would have put a road through Delray Oaks to the airport. And a neighbor that apparently has refused to talk to our city manager, except when it's time to ask for some help financially. Mr. Pick has informed us several times that he has basically no contact with Monterey staff after the residents oppose the road coming through to the airport. I would ask you to be careful on passing this part of the budget and ask more questions. How solvent is the airport? How many how much money do they have in their reserve account? Much more than we do. So with that, I would just ask that you not approve that portion of the budget. It sounded to me at the airport board meeting that it was already a done deal and already passed. With respect to the $1.2 million included in the budget, I would just ask that it be put somewhere on the budget, even as an asterisk, so the residents know that we still carry that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Dennis.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to also thank Dino and the staff for the outstanding work. I also think there needs to be some recognition, given that the revenues that we are enjoying over this period of time were a result of the people of city of Delray Oaks stepping up and saying, look, we need to fix our financial problems. And they voted and approved sales tax increments. That the city gets to keep all of that, and that has helped us, as well as the efforts that have been made by Dino and previous administrations to bring in the cannabis business. So we are in extraordinary condition circumstances, and the city has never looked as good as it is now financially. With regard to the comment about the debt, the that's a that's a good point. People need to remember that we do owe money, but that's a balance sheet item. What's more important is a recognition of the current debt service and so that we have a picture of how much money we have to pay back to our debtors every year. And that's that's relevant to any revenue statement. Finally, I wanted to comment on MBEP. MBEP is asked for $5,000. We've agreed to give them $2,500. Now, put this in perspective. Our neighbors are being asked to provide the same thing. Monterey is being asked to provide $5,000, and I think I haven't looked at their budget, but I believe they probably will. But if you look at our budget, we're about 1/20th of Monterey's revenue. So I would submit that the benefit that we derive from MBEP does not justify $2,500. I think it is more in line with the other nonprofits that we belong have memberships in. And I would recommend a $500 amount, and we can use that $2,000 to pay for some of the things that Mr. Rutherford suggested we pay for. But the thing I really wanted to emphasize again was thank you very much, Dino, for being a part of our city. And thank you, Kim and Karen and the police department. Everybody's doing a fantastic job. And your willingness to withhold pay increases and COLA adjustments is absolutely significant. And I'll talk more to that when I get the report on the Monterey Regional Waste Management District Board meeting. Thank you.
All right, I see Frederica.
I'm the mayor, her and council members. I'm going to make my comments, and later on, I have Irene sitting next to me that would like to make some comments, too. So when you see my hand, I'm not trying to double dip into the comments.
Okay.
I have several questions. First of all, I would like to say that I concur with Ken's concern. The serious concerns about the reduction in revenue from the airport. Is the true-up provisions of the contract no longer applicable? If not, when was that contract amended? Are the police services at the airport to be reduced to with the reduction in reimbursement? And if not, why are we subsidizing the airport? The other items that I have is on page two of the overview, item 611115, council member stipend. This is actually stated as $400, but all the other current year actuals on this chart appear to be year-to-date. For example, I don't think we have a $1 million per month payroll. And I note that the annual budgeted stipend is being reduced from $7,500 to $4,800 for the year 2021. So are we thanking the council members for agreeing to a pay cut? Or is there another explanation for the difference? The next item I have is line item 61165 on the deferred compensation, which is shown as a separate line item. And I thought deferred compensation is gross pay that is diverted from a regular paycheck into an IRA or 401K or 505 457K. So federal and state income tax is not paid until the money is distributed to the employee. When I was an employee, it always and I paid into or received deferred comp. It showed a true gross amount and a pre-tax deduction for deferred compensation. So my question is, why is this $12,000 shown as a separate line item and not simply included in line item 61105, the total compensation? And what position or positions receive this additional compensation? Is it just the city manager, or is does it include the police chief? Is it included in their salaries of $180,000 and $167,000 as shown on the salary schedule? And if it's not, why isn't it? And my last item that I have is line item 61175, admin leave. My understanding of the administrative leave is that it is paid authorized time away from work that is not counted against an employee's vacation or sick leave. So if that's the case, the compensation should already be included in the payroll line item. Unless, of course, employees are allowed to have time off at full pay and then be given additional compensation over and above full pay. Again, I'm asking, is this a separate line item, and who is eligible to receive it? Is it included in the annual salary shown on the salary schedule? And if not, why not? I'm thinking the salary schedule should actually portray the actual compensation that is being paid. Thank you.
Thanks, Frederica. Dino, did you want to?
Yeah, I'm taking notes. I've got about six questions to answer. Do you want me to go? Do you want to want me to dive in now?
Sure.
Great. So I'll start with the last because they're they're I think they're more quickly answered. The deferred compensation line and admin leave line and the auto allowance line, all three apply to my contract. And we had those broken out separately so that the city and and the residents could see all costs associated with with all of our positions, and in this case, the the city manager position. And those are additive to my to my salary, which is included in line 61105. And you'll see on the on the salary schedule where it says per contract. And and I'm happy to. I don't know exactly if my contract is it should be on the website. If it's not, it will be shortly. It's a public document, and you're all welcome to to fully understand what's going on there, because I have no motive of hiding anything there. The let me see, I believe you asked about council stipend, Frederica, and that in the coming fiscal year, I believe the mayor has said that she will forego her stipend, and that reflects the decrease of of one year. We talked about the fact that that's not necessary, but but it's it's symbolic on her part and and important, and that's what's included in the budget there. And again, no, no staff have have taken pay cuts, and so I didn't want that to lead to a broader discussion, although I appreciate the fact that she's making a symbolic sacrifice there, which may not be very symbolic to her. I I want to appreciate that that it's meaningful. And then we go back to the to the police contract, and I just want to 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 address Ken's comments on the on the police contract. Look, we're 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 in unprecedented times here. This is not a normal budget year. It's not a normal budget environment. It's not a normal economy. And I have not gone over and analyzed the airport's books. And what you say about their financial condition may absolutely be true, Ken. They may be rolling in the dough. That that is not how it was portrayed to to us in terms of the cuts in service from from airline services. And there was a request that came came to the city. And as the chief and I sat down and started doing our important work for the city to determine how we were going to get the city's budget through this pandemic-induced recession, we also considered how we might reduce the cost in the coming year to the airport, reflective of the of the formula that we use to determine the cost share with the airport, which is 50/50. That's that's how we cost share our police services with the airport. So when we came up, and and again, this this full kudos to to Chief and his department here, when they came up with approximately $242,000 in reductions in the coming year in police department budget that include everything from the one FTE position to training dollars to fleet renewal to weapons and ammunition and every every line item. That $242,000 reduction in expenses goes directly to the city. That's saving the city $242,000 in expenses next year during the pandemic period. No question, it's it's unprecedented, and and I appreciate what what he did. By the way, the budget committee, which includes the mayor and and council member Getzel and Dennis Allian, they reviewed those numbers in the proposed budget and and had and asked their questions of Chief and 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 concurred. I mean, the budget that's before you is 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 yeah, is a document that's been reviewed and concurred by the budget committee. So to the question of what how to deal with the with the airport, if we know we're going to spend $242,000 less this coming year in police services, and we instead of doing what I think every every good steward would would do here, and and that is honor honor a a request, albeit from someone that we have not the best communications with at all and a difficult relationship, but is still a neighboring jurisdiction to whom we provide police services. Would frankly, there's a there's a bit of a moral ethical issue there on the one hand. There's certainly a contractual issue that I think can be addressed very easily. And then the other bit to it is, if we charge them more just so we can claw that money in during the year, the the true-up mechanism is going to be a forcing function to pay it all back. So so we will retain that. We're somewhere on the order of 12 to 14 months. And then the audit will show that we spent less money and require us to to pay that back, perhaps at a time when we we don't want to pay it back and are maybe even in worse shape. So so I think the true-up mechanism is there. There has been no amendment. I think Frederica asked a question about whether the contract's been amended. It it amended with regard to the true-up function. It hasn't. There's an audit that's conducted, and then and then we determine whether we owe the airport money or the airport owes us money. And last year, they paid us $10,000 for the true-up based on on the audit. We'll have an audit in about four months for this contract year to determine exactly what was spent and whether we owe them money or they owe us money. And then the audit for this coming year will be again about 14 months from from now. So that's that's the rationale behind it, and I know Chief has has some some comments here, and I'd like to offer him an opportunity to to comment. That's okay with you, Mayor.
City manager, thank you. Mayor, council members, public. I just would like to add to the city manager's comments. The impetus for this was not for the cost savings in the police department was not the airport by any means. The city manager and I had discussed budgets along with other city staff for several weeks prior to looking at anything from the airport. With COVID, the unsure economic impacts, we thought it prudent to start looking at possibly where we can cut the budget in the upcoming fiscal year, because we we still don't know exactly where COVID is going. We certainly didn't four months ago when we were getting this budget. As the city manager pointed out, when we built the contract model, we split the cost as close to 50/50 as we possibly can. There's one or two outliers. One is an administrative fee they pay us to to help offset the cost of running the police department, payroll, things like that. Pretty much, the budget's split 50/50, so if we save $250,000, eventually, the airport gets that savings. And it's not just for them that we're doing this. The first priority is saving money for the city. The end result, since we can tighten our belt and be cautious of using public funds, the airport will will just benefit with that. Now, should costs go up in the future, they will split those costs 50/50 as well. So it's not money that's available for anything else. It will eventually go to the airport. It will go to us based upon the true-up mechanism. So there's no subsidizing by any means. It is just a question perhaps of when each agency gets that money after the true-up. There are no funds that would go back to the airport come out of anything the city would ever retain for any length of time other than in in a holding. And the reason we did this is is number one, for for the benefit of the city, but also not just the city's books, but for the citizens. When you hired me as your police chief, and I was told to put this together, it was so that we could save more money and get better services. The city greatly, greatly benefits from this this arrangement. We have two officers out at night when before we've only had one. We have better training. We have better equipment, and we've hired an exceptional staff in the last couple of years, and we have better officers. And I guess I never thought as a police chief I would be having this involved, the conversation about saving the city money in a in a in a budget. But we're trying to be prudent. We're trying to serve the city, and we're trying to do it in an ethical way with a partner. And no matter what the relationship is outside of the policing contract, I want to keep our relationship professional, mutually beneficial, and and mutually admired on both sides of the fence here. And and that was the intent, and I think what the outcome of this was. And that was the intent, and I think what the outcome of this will be. Mr. City Manager, I'm sorry for taking so long, but thank you.
It's all good. All right, Dennis, do you have your hand up, or was that from before? Dennis Allian?
That was actually from before.
Okay.
That was from before, but I just want to do again, now that you give me the opportunity...
You're welcome to take it if you'd like it.
Yeah. Again, I just want to thank Dino, chief, all these people, really done an outstanding job. And I put it in the perspective of looking back since I was on the council, starting, I think in 2003. This is just phenomenal. We have a wonderful budget, we've got a great city manager, and an extraordinary chief of police. This budget produces a surplus, and in the terms, words of my Arab friends, and so that we include more inclusive here, alhamdulillah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Frederica, did you have your hand raised? Okay, go ahead. You're muted.
Yeah, I just did it. It's for Irene, please, for Irene. Good evening, Mayor, council, and all the staff who work so hard. But I do have a question. At the expense of section of the budget line item 64550, now the member dues contribution in the budget is about $48,550, but the membership and contribution schedule is only $14,312. So why doesn't it match?
Good question. Dino?
That's a great question.
She has one more. I have to finish that, and then there's Dino. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Second one is on the budget item 63653, the contractual services, PM. What is PM?
Is that all of your questions, or do you have more?
No. And then what PM, what is PM, and what services have been provided, and what services are anticipated? That's all I have. So what's PM? I don't understand what PM is.
Thank you, Irene.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Irene, for those questions. The PM stands for project management. That contract was approved with Kendall Flint around mid-year, in anticipation of a significant amount of workload associated with FORA. And we have taken that way down, but kept it on as a contract into this coming fiscal year in order to assist with any potential FORA work that continues beyond, FORA-related work that continues beyond the sunset of FORA June 30th. So that's what the PM stands for. And then I'm going to phone a friend on the membership question. Kim, do you happen to know what goes into that line item that increases it? I can't recall.
And I'm sorry, I missed the number. What number were you talking about?
Yeah, it's a...
I have it, it's 6 dot 4550. Is that correct, Irene?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I have. Actually, I actually am going to have to research, because off the top of my head, I don't know. I'm so sorry.
Yeah. I do know, I mean, obviously, there are other costs in that line item beyond what you're approving on the contribution schedule, but I don't recall exactly what it is.
Neither.
I had it in my head at one point, but it's gone. So we'll do the research and answer that question.
And did that answer everything, Irene?
I do, about the $48,550. Does that include all the other things like Dino just said, and Kim? There are other things involved? So I'm not clear about that.
No, they're going to look into that and get back to us.
Yeah, I understood that, that was my other thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I see no hands. So I'll bring it back to council, and Louise has been very patient. Yes, Louise?
Okay, just want to make sure my sound's working. I was very, I should have started my comment with thanking Karen and Kim and Dino and Jeff for the hard work in giving the Budget Committee a beautiful piece of work for us to tweak, and a few places pull and push, but without their hard work, time and effort, and insight and knowledge and background information, we as a Budget Committee could not have come up with this great product. So thank you all.
All right. John? Any last comments, questions? No? Louise? Pat?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. Kristen?
Nothing more, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So I also want to thank everyone for all the hard work on the budget, especially taking into account all the uncertainty that was put at the time that this was being developed. We were all trying to figure out, you know, where we're staying and being at home, and the chaos then of everybody coming back into the office, and the economic downturn, which we do not know how long will last, as well as probable instability around an upcoming presidential election. I also want to thank someone that needs to mute, please. I also want to make special note of the separating out of the details. I have been asking for that, and I really love seeing how like things are charged together. So thank you so much for, I find it really helpful. And I also want to echo, I think it was Dennis that said, we are in the best financial situation the city has ever been in. You know, we have a healthy reserve, we're beginning to save for PERS obligations, we have a balanced budget, particularly as our neighbors struggle with millions of dollars in cuts. And so big thanks to Dino, Kim, Karen, Roberto, who's not here this evening, chief, and the Finance Committee for bringing the council sound and cautious options. You know, we are in the best shape, but it's still, we are not on cement, right? One bad thing could happen, and we just aren't able to bend as quickly and as easily as other cities. That said, I also want to address the airport contract. I was concerned after I heard about the airport discussion, and dug into the numbers, and I dug into the contract. There are clauses in there that caused me great concern about a decrease. The contract was not written with any kind of decrease in mind. So I have had conversations with Dino, I've had conversations with Dino and chief, I've also had conversations with council. There are clauses that, the true-up is far more complicated, we do not have to pay it back, we take the money, and if the charges, or if the expenses are less than we're anticipating, it rolls over to the next year, and it decreases the next year's payment for the airport. There is also a clause in the contract that allows our city manager and their executive director to make amendments to that in particular, to the methodology, used to not only establish, yes, to establish the fees. And so that is what I believe, I don't think it's the council, I mean, we direct the city manager to do that. So I just wanted to address all of that. My preference would be to have the full amount. The airport budget does have the full amount in their approved budget. They did not enter in any decrease in costs. My preference would be to have the full amount, and then have it roll over for the extra years. It gives me, in my opinion, it gives our chief far more flexibility. I'm concerned about going back if there is increased costs, and this is being seen as, you know, a one-time thing. We would have never guessed we were at this point in this year, right? We would have never guessed of the pandemic, we would have never guessed about all of the issues with police, the countrywide. So I hear the concerns, I have dug into the concerns, there is a valve in the contract for the city manager and the executive director to alter things. Yes, I wish that had been done before, but it is there. And it does need to be in writing. So those are my thoughts. I'd like to, you know, just again, thank you. This is a monumental budget to put together under all of the circumstances. So on that, yes, Dino?
Thanks, Mayor. I just, before any motions are made, or any voting happens, or any further discussion, I just need to, I just need to point out something. I, you know, I have, it has been my utter pleasure working with this city team, watching them grow, watching them bear up under different stresses, and not to mention pandemic and whatnot. This budget is Kim Carvalho's budget. She has owned it throughout. The Budget Committee played an important role, you know, others played important roles, Roberto. But I just, I just really think it's important to highlight, I have asked her so many questions, and I, you know, we've talked through so many issues, and her professionalism and her temperament throughout this budget process has been so impressive. I'm very proud of her. I think you should all be very proud of her, and I think that before any action is taken on the budget, I just, I just want to highlight that. She's in a different place today than she was 12 months ago. Frankly, a different person, I think, in a lot of ways, and just the growth is phenomenal. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dino.
I agree. Especially taking into account that we have fairly new bookkeeping software, and struggling to figure out all of the capabilities of that, yes. And every year, every budget gets more robust, more detailed, and I can't agree more. So thank you.
Thank you.
John?
I think this has been a fascinating discussion, and I'm really glad a lot of the stuff around the airport contract kind of came out. So with that, I'm pretty confident in the staff's recommendation on how to kind of manage the airport, I guess, potential windfall, you know, some of us are looking at it as a windfall, but it's really, it's not, it's just that we're being able to operate at a cheaper cost, and that's getting them reflected in the fees that we charge. And I really appreciate the chief's description or explanation on how the true-up mechanism works. Any extra money that we might get, would eventually, we'd have to pay it back, or at least it would have to be reflected, well, it would have to be reflected in our costs. So with that, then, I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation and then authorize the city manager to, and council to draft a one-page amendment with the airport contract.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Karen, can you please do roll call?
I will start them. Councilmember Getzel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lintel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
I have one question, if I may. When will we see that amendment? Is there a date that can...
Mayor, if you're asking me, I'm going to defer a little bit to Alex here. If you authorize us to draft and submit a simple agreement based on the numbers in the budget, then we will do so. I've discussed with Alex sort of the complexity there, and I think we're looking at something very simple and straightforward with the numbers being reflected out of the budget. Certainly, if the council's will is for us to return back for council approval before submission to the airport, then we can do that, either at a special meeting or at a meeting in August, at your pleasure, and maybe Alex has a comment here.
Alan?
Mayor, I think the, you know, it's up to council whether or not they want to authorize the city manager to go ahead and just run with it. I think, you know, to your question regarding timing, I think, you know, depending on Scott Huber's review over at the airport district, I mean, I think in the coming days, we could have a one-page prepared, sort of outlining the amendment with respect to just this fiscal year's budget, and, you know, just a one-page, I think, in the course of a few days, we can hammer that out and have it over to the airport.
Okay. I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
So the budget was approved unanimously. Let's move on to new business item number B, consider the Monterey County Emergency Communications Agreement. Dino, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to turn this one over to our chief, who is increasingly learning how to write staff reports and handle projects in his, and very capably stepping in in some assistant city manager roles here. So Jeff, you did the heavy lifting here, you want to present?
Thank you, city manager. Mayor, council, the item that is up for your consideration is the approval of an agreement for 911 emergency communication services with the County of Monterey and 17 other supplemental agencies that receive emergency 911 and dispatching services from the county. It should be noted that we've participated under a similar agreement for the last 20 years, approximately. This agreement doesn't change anything significantly, such as billing mechanisms or responsibilities. The reason in discussions with the emergency communication directors for the county, the reason for this new agreement is just to update things specifically governance structure, and more clearly outlining both the executive board, which is made up of basically city managers and executives from governmental agencies, and then the operations board, which is made up of the department executives, such as police chiefs and fire chiefs. It more clearly outlines roles and responsibilities. Should there be differences in agreement or service needs, and how those things are fleshed out. It doesn't include any other responsibilities for the city, or any other financial liabilities... out? It doesn't include any other responsibilities for the city or any other financial liabilities. The billing will be the same as, as always. One thing that should be noted is there is no other entity that provides the services that the city of Delray Oaks could possibly utilize. And the scale of economy that is saved through this agreement is, is actually enormous. For a city to have its own dispatch center with related personnel costs would certainly almost double the amount of the police department budget. I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify anything that I've spoken about.
Thank you, chief. John?
I'm all phones tonight. Sorry. No questions. No, I've read the agreement. I think it's great. We've been doing it for the last 20 years, so.
Louise?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
No questions. Thank you.
Kristen?
No questions.
And I don't either. Let's go out to the public. Any public comment? I see no hands. We'll bring it back. Any last minute questions, comments? I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the emergency 911 contract.
I second.
Karen, could you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Getzelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
You have about five minutes.
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Need to listen to this other thing.
It passes unanimously. So we'll move on to new business C. Sorry, Jeff, I muted you. Consider an agreement with TMC for the RSTP funding. Dino, could you please explain this motion?
Need one of those mute buttons for it to work.
Yeah.
Just kidding. All right. So, thank you, Mayor. The item before you this evening is to consider approval of a TMC master state and federal funding agreement. The, the agreement essentially is going to allow us to receive funding in an estimated amount of $52,596 in, in our fair share of, of RSTP funds. And that is regional surface transportation program funds. Those funds are restricted for, for transportation use when they come to us. This agreement, without it, we, we can't get those funds. And, and other jurisdictions are being asked to, to approve the same. So fairly straightforward here. There, there is not a downside to, to the city to approve it. There is definitely a downside to not approving it in terms of not being able to get the, get the funding available. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. John, any questions? You raised your hand. I see.
All right. So, no, I just, does it come with any obligation on, on routing for the port tax?
No.
Okay. That was my one question. Okay.
Louise?
No questions.
Patricia?
Thank you.
Kristen?
No. No, thank you.
So my only question is, what would we use it? How, do you have a, an idea of how that $52,000 would be used?
I don't, Mayor. Not at this, not at this point. It, it will, it will go into sort of our restricted band of funds such as SB1, Measure X. We generally access those funds to do our street servicing projects because the funds are restricted for that use. But they could be used for other things, to compete for, for other grants perhaps. They can be used as matching funds for additional state and, and county money. So, so this action doesn't foresee any specific use, but sets in place the agreement for us to receive money.
And can you tell us more about, I do believe there was verbiage in it about further grants or our ability to request further grants once we agree?
Just, my understanding is that the agreement allows us to compete for grants and to potentially use the monies we receive as, as matching funds to be more competitive for, for grants as well.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll go out to the public. Any questions, comments on the TMC RSTP funding? I am not seeing any. I'll come back to, to the council. Any last questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we enter into an agreement with TMC for the RSTP funding.
I got it. Doesn't matter whomever. Great. We have a motion and a second. Karen, can you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Getzelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Yes.
Councilmember Lintell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes. All right. The agreement with TMC for the RSTP funding has been passed unanimously. So we'll move on to item D, Consider an Agreement with RMS Equipment for the Police Department. Dino?
Turn it over to, to chief to present.
Okay.
I, I thought the city manager was trying to mute me again.
It was me.
Okay. Thank you, city manager, mayor, council and members of the public. The item under consideration is a contract to purchase a new police records management system to replace our current system, which is approximately 22 years old. Even though it is software and it is updated, it is a dated and insufficient system, which I'll explain shortly. Background on the system that we currently use is our records management system is basically the backbone of information and intelligence for our agency. Any accident report, criminal reports, and, and other police reports are stored in that system along with the information that is involved in any of the participants in any of those reports. It is used to recall information for insurance purposes, for criminal prosecution, and also, and most importantly, one of the drivers of this is to recall crime statistics that are mandated by the California Department of Justice and the United States Department of Justice. Our current system is approximately 22 years old. It is a generic version of a records management system that was not developed with California in mind. It's from the Midwest and it is a plug and play type of a system. The important change that is coming is called the NIBRs or National Incident Based Reporting System. The reason that's important is our old crime statistic reporting is based on UCR, Uniform Crime Reporting Data, that the federal government uses. They are completely moving away from that and they are going to the National Incident Based Reporting System, NIBRs. It is a much more robust crime incident reporting system requiring a lot more information than we have. And our current system is not equipped. Basically, there are 10 different data sections that are currently pulled for UCR. They're going to be at least, I believe, 52 crime classifications, which would be cost prohibitive and time prohibitive for our staff to find through our current system. Additionally, there are many other shortcomings that newer and more modern crime reporting systems or incident management or records management systems have. Currently, we, recently, we looked at different vendors. We can only find two that actually have the capabilities that we need for our reporting requirements. And these are federally mandated and state mandated reporting requirements. And in comparison of the two, one was much more functionally diverse and adds a whole lot of other benefits to our reporting system. One of those, which I'll just point out quickly, is a, what's called a citizen RIMS, which will allow our real-time crime reporting to be published on a, on our city website so that anybody in the city can see a more accurate picture of our, of our calls for service and incidents. We bring forward a contract from the Sunridge Systems, RMS, which was the only competitor that had the majority of the things that we are looking for. The only other manufacturer is a local Pacific Grove company called TrackNet. There are problems with not getting as much of the capabilities that we would get through Sunridge Systems. It's a small company with not a very progressive record of improvement in keeping up with the times as far as reporting systems. And it's significantly more expensive than Sunridge Systems. TrackNet is used regionally. A lot of the agencies in the county have TrackNet. However, there are discussion among many of the agencies that they're looking to go away from TrackNet possibly to look for a more, more robust system. One of the nice things is information sharing in the state of California is very important. We solve crimes not only for our own agency but for other agencies. And how we do that is we get information and we share information. Sunridge Systems has approximately 179 police departments in California that they service. And their specialty is small police departments and medium-sized police departments and small like ours. Other vendors such as Motorola, who serve agencies the size of Salinas County, very cost prohibitive, multimillion dollar issues to get some of their systems up and running. The fiscal impact for the city is approximately $82,440. And that would be over a course of approximately five years. And that includes the lease purchase of not only the software system, but also a server to store the information that we get utilizing the system. If you look on the staff report, years one through three, it's approximately $16,080 or $16,000 to pay for this contract. After the Dell server is paid for, we then go to continuing to pay for the software and the licensing and support. And that's 12,000, approximately $12,000 years four and five. And then in year six, with the server and the licensing or in the software paid for, it drops down to a yearly licensing and support fee of 33, approximately $3,300. It should be noted that we currently pay about $3,200 a year for our current system that is, is not very robust and will not comply with federal mandates. So after five years of paying off the server and the software, we would then go back to paying approximately just what we pay now, slightly higher by $100 or $150. The other thing I'd like to point out is this is, this is mandatory. It's necessary and it's needed to comply with federal guidelines. The other thing is I should point out that the airport police department, when I was over there and when that, when they had their own department, they used the same software that we currently use. This is another example of the contract services and how our partnership together helps reduce costs. The airport would be in the same boat and they, they were looking at a similar system. Between the two agencies, the cost would be approximately twice as much. We've been able to save half of that cost through our partnership with the airport. Conversely, so have they. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's kind of a complex subject and I, hopefully I gave a good enough background.
Thanks, chief. John? Okay. Louise?
I think this is very great and very important. Having spent most of my 34 years in the army, in army law enforcement and having to work with NIBRs, DIBRs and all other different kinds of databases and having to mine databases at the request of our headquarters and Congress, it's a vital function. And to be able to have everything at your fingertips is manpower-saving. And I totally support this expenditure. Thank you.
Thanks. Pat?
Yes, I think any thing that we can do to help our police department who, they're already outstanding and, but any encouragement to make it more easy, easy for them to perform all their duties, I'm in favor of it. So yes, I recommend that we purchase this.
Kristen?
Yes, I agree with everybody on all those points. And again, another benefit of combined police services, we can expense this to the airport rather than absorbing it all ourselves like all the other cities have to do it. So again, it's, we've been smart in, in our contracts and this is another success story. So I'm in full support.
Okay. Well, you had me when you said there will be the capability for the public to see what's going on and further transparency. I've been wanting that. I, you know, I've been wanting that. So, but I do have a couple of questions. Who will provide support for the server and all of the other computer management?
If it is a server and hardware issue, we will utilize our own IT. Of course, there is some support and service from Dell during the lease. And, but long-term costs for, for hardware is, of course, the city's, you know, responsibilities. As far as the software, if it's a software issue, we, we are paying for support and for not only the license but for the support that, that, that comes with it. And it should be noted, you know, some of the software upgrades and, and things like that in, in the future. And, and that is, the, the server is typically the easy thing. It either works or it doesn't work. The, the difficult thing is the software and making sure that it interfaces with our website, with other things that we want to do. We are, we will now have a, a mobile smartphone capability for officers to access records, which we never had before, which is going to be a game changer for our officers. So that will be with the, the support in the lease payments.
Do they include training? You know, your first months or not?
Yes.
Okay, great. And you, you talked a lot about the capabilities, which are fabulous. Does it, does, is there a sharing mechanism of information between the agencies you mentioned? Or is it simply they each have them and so we all know how to use them?
No, there's, there's information sharing amongst the agencies.
Okay. Okay. That's great. And then my last one. So it's a five-year lease, correct? And then we own it afterwards?
Yes.
Who owns it? Who owns it? Us or the airport after five years?
We do.
The Delray Oaks Police Department?
Yes.
Okay. Even though they support it for the next three or four years?
That's correct. So for three years, it's a, it's a lease, lease purchase plan for the server for three years. And then we own it as the city. And then for the software, it will be five years. And then we will own the rights to the software and the costs for that are just placed into our budget estimate for the airport and as part of the 50-50 split basically for our services agreement with the airport as it stands.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's go out to the public. Oh, I'm sorry. Louise, did you have your hand up? Did you mean to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I had one question. You know, obviously for the airport, just a comment, one question and one comment. My comment is, is that obviously this, this involves that, also that portion of our airport contract that goes under that additional fee that we get from them for the administrative costs.
Oh.
I mean, logically, this would be I mean, logically, this would be, this is police administration. So this would be an administrative expense, at least in my mind.
Yeah, thanks, Louise. So, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong here. I mean, the cost of this software and the server will go into our overall cost for police services. Be split down the middle, and half of it will be charged to the airport as their contractual cost for that service on an annual basis. It, the 40, I think, I just want to be careful about what you're referring to. There's a $40,000 or ish?
Forty-five.
$45,000 number in that, in our annual cost. That's Karen and Kim and my time dealing with the police department.
Okay.
Anything regarding, you know, the acquisition of something like this or other equipment, whether, even though it's administratively oriented, is going to be a 50-50 split in cost share with the airport.
Okay, thank you. My other question was, okay, so we have a server. What is the backup?
There, the Commander, Commander Berkwine is working on online backup resources with our IT person right now. So we back up our current records management online and also our city's administrative files in the cloud, not online, in the cloud. Correct me if I'm wrong, boss. And then we're working on trying to transfer, to integrate that with our IT folks. It's, it's, it's not difficult to do, although you're talking to the wrong guy exactly how we're going to do it. But there are certain requirements, just federally and statewide, for records management systems to be backed up. And we're looking to do that in the cloud like the rest of the cities. And there may be some additional small, smaller costs involved in that, but we just don't know that yet because we don't have the contract. We haven't had the training. We haven't had IT talk to Sunridge Systems. But it's, it will be incidental to this.
Thank you.
Any other council comments, questions? All right, let's move it out to the public. Anybody have any questions about? I see no hands, so I'll bring it back.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the agreement for RMS equipment for the police department.
I second.
All right, Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Getzelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes. All right, the agreement for the RMS equipment for the police department was approved unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to seven staff reports. First one is city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. City managers and the county CAO continue to meet regularly regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. The city is coordinating closely with surrounding jurisdictions as we work together to protect the population, especially our most vulnerable, while slowly opening businesses and facilities. All our city businesses are currently open and operating under various public health guidelines, depending on the type of business. While our tennis courts are open for singles play and our park is open for people to enjoy open space, our dog park, team sports facilities, and Old Town Hall remain closed. The county's most recent guidance regarding social circles will require individual discipline as it will be virtually impossible to enforce. So many people we see are doing the right thing. They're maintaining their social distancing. They're wearing face masks and hopefully washing their hands often. Please continue to follow public health orders as we progress through the pandemic period. I want to thank our police department, and especially our chief, for the progress made over the past several years to improve our department and its capabilities to provide community policing to our city. The progress made with regard to our policy and procedures manual, police training, acquisition of body cameras and non-lethal capabilities, community outreach and communication, and integration into regional organizations to improve investigations and service have been superb. I want to thank our community for being thoughtful during this challenging time where righteous anger and frustration regarding the murder of George Floyd and others has driven a call for introspection and change. Chief and I participated in silent vigil and others. Yeah, I'm sorry. Chief and I participated in a silent vigil that showed the deep passion that exists in our community to continue improving our understanding of one another and to promote equality and justice for all. I want to thank those who have participated in our conversations with Chief and his officers about policing, including our mayor and other council members and planning commissioners. As a city staff, we are committed to improving. It is why we are implementing a program for all staff to help us better understand our biases and prejudices and effectively modify our behavior. The program is currently in use in the city of Salinas, and I will lead the effort here at staff level to ensure it has the appropriate level of support. The city successfully defended a suit brought by Land Watch of Monterey County against its recently adopted housing element and environmental analysis. Land Watch withdrew the suit, but not before costing the city significant staff effort defending against a frivolous lawsuit and in spite of the city's attempts to accommodate Land Watch's concerns prior to its adoption. After attempting to negotiate with the California Native Plant Society in good faith for nine months regarding the path forward regarding the South Boundary Road project and finding it quite challenging to meet and address California Native Plant Society's board and walk on the ground out there with Brian and Nikki, who are with us tonight, CNPS has, and Molly Erickson, as their counsel, have filed a lawsuit against the city, against FORA, and against LAFCO. I want to emphasize that the city continues to be committed to a resolution that is agreeable to both the city and CNPS, but that those negotiations are now happening in an environment of litigation initiated by CNPS. And I might add that that litigation is needless and costing both the city and CNPS staff and attorney time. We will be discussing the matter in close session with council tonight. The city team is back in our offices. We're wearing our masks. We're socially distancing, but it feels terrific to be back together with the team. We have put in place Plexiglas windows on the service counter, signage for social distancing inside city hall. And in the weeks ahead, we will be developing customer service hours whereby we will take appointments and limit access, but provide face-to-face access to our, to our community so we can try to return to some degree of normalcy regarding permitting and other city business that normally happens over the counter. We have been working diligently to put in place the agreements that council has approved with FORA and with Marina Coast Water District. Staff have executed the Joint Community Facilities Agreement, which will allow the transfer of Habitat Management Funds to the city. We have executed the Agreement for Water Services with Marina Coast Water District, after their board approved it following our council's approval. We have executed the Memorandum of Agreement with FORA regarding the transfer of the South Boundary Road project. We've executed the Witten Engineer Contract Transfer from FORA to the city. And two escrow accounts for the General Jim Moore Intersection and South Boundary Roads have been approved and opened. All documents and agreements are executed to allow FORA to transfer roughly $9.5 million to the city for use on South Boundary Road and Habitat Management. And let me just point out here, as we pointed out in our conversation with South Boundary Road, that's with CNPS, that sounds like a lot of money, but we don't think it's nearly enough money to build the project. So we're still in a, in a, in a value engineering stage and trying to figure out how we can actually build that road as we develop the cost of it. Caltrans will be trimming vegetation along 218 tomorrow. PG&E has trimmed trees and brush from their easement between DRO and Seaside. And as Irene pointed out tonight, AT&amp;T has been responsive to us regarding some noise complaints regarding a cell tower. We are responding to various complaints about fireworks. We believe most, if not all of them, are occurring in the city of Seaside. But that doesn't mean they're not bothering our residents and annoying our, and panicking our dogs and other pets. So our department is dealing with those as they come up. I've held several coffees with the city manager, with Chief joining me on one and Sergeant Perez on another, to engage our public in meaningful dialogue about policing and a lot of the issues contemporary surrounding policing. It's been a productive, constructive dialogue. I encourage residents to continue to join us and contact your department to go on a ride along if the desire suits you. Our officers to a person are open to engaging with our community, and we welcome the opportunity. The Planning Commission met Wednesday and approved a CUP to place an owl box in the butterfly garden near the tennis courts, and they approved two home renovation permits. The Garden Center CUP was continued as it had not been properly marked on the ground with story polling and taping so that Planning Commissioners and residents could see what the Garden Center was asking for in the CUP. So it will be continued to the following meeting once the story polling has been done correctly. As an aside regarding COVID, I just want to point out, I traveled to help family, and when I returned, I was tested at MPC. The test took 30 seconds. The swab tickles going in, tickles coming out. It does not hurt. It takes less than 30 seconds to be tested. And I'm happy to say I was negative. But there's a lot of concern about testing being somehow painful or uncomfortable. It is not. Staff, this is news for all council. Staff received word that the $65,000 LEAP grant has been approved by the state. So we'll be engaging with HCD on how it will be dispersed and how we can begin to move forward with what was called for in the grant request to be, to be done. And lastly, the Regional Parks District met and approved the Four Tag Master Agreement, which was an important milestone in allowing that project to continue to move forward. That completes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? Louise?
Yes, Dino, some of my neighbors are wondering, what does it look like when the dog park will be opened? It's not an area that is crowded where people hang out, like, like a, you know, a basketball court where you're sweating and breathing in each other's places, faces. They really want to be able to get to that dog park.
I know, believe me. We've heard from the, from the community, and we have been engaged and are engaged regularly with the county. The answer to our question, to that question essentially, is that the county health officer continues to be sufficiently concerned that because the dogs are intermingling, and by the way, dogs can carry the virus, that somehow that'll be a mechanism for their owners to congregate and perhaps be too close to one another. And he's just not comfortable taking them off the closed list. And that's, that's where we are. We've had, we've seen people climbing the fence to get into it, to walk their dogs. I don't know what else to tell you, Lou. I think, I think, you know, we're going to continue to work with the county, and as soon as it's possible to open, we will. We've also asked, if I can elaborate on one more thing about COVID, we've also asked about the garage sale. And we've contacted David Kimball today and discussed that it probably makes more, much more sense to postpone the garage sale at this time rather than to try to attempt to hold it, though the county was willing to give us the prerogative to hold it as long as we assume the responsibility for somehow enforcing industry standards at every home participating, which we simply cannot do. My, David was very gracious, and so I think we're going to end up postponing the garage sale.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to call on Dennis Allion, who is our representative at the Waste Management. Dennis?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I wish I could tell you that the Waste Management District revenue and budget was as healthy as Delray Oaks, but it's not. And the impact of the COVID-19 on the landfill, I think I've reported before, I think it was down 20% in April and a 15% to 20% again in May. So based on that, staff had a difficult job of taking out crystal balls and trying to figure out what would be a budget that would be break even or actually has to produce a slight revenue, net income, because of our bond covenant. We cannot break our bond covenant. We're required to have, the bond covenant ratio is 1.25. That means our bottom line revenue has to be 1 and a quarter times the debt service that is required on that bond. As a result, what the, what the staff did was the, last Friday, the Board of Directors approved the final budget for 2021. This budget included significant cuts to operations and personnel costs to eliminate a $4 million budget deficit. The reductions were gained through a combination of following measures. One was staff reductions made possible by a voluntary early retirement program. Second was wage cuts taken by the general manager and the, and the directors, voluntary wage cuts. Wage increase deferrals agreed to by all the managers, the managing group, and aggressive cuts to non-personnel spending. And finally, and unregrettably, targeted layoffs and hiring freezes. So the staff was at an authorized level of 144. It's going to be reduced to 116 as a result of this. And the, it was a tough decision because the, the service that is going to be cut out, because it is the only non-mandated service that the landfill provides, the Last Chance Mercantile is going to be, continued to be temporarily, and I want to underscore the word temporarily, closed. Fact of the matter is that the Last Chance is an extremely popular program run by the district. It also provided the opportunity for people to go there for California redemption value refunds. This has been a significant impact on primarily people who are homeless because there are no places they can go now to take their aluminum cans and get some cash for them. All the supermarkets have stopped their redemption. So Last Chance, I mean, the landfill was sort of the last local area that they could go to. I don't know if there's a place in Salinas still open or not. So a very unpopular decision, but a very tough one, and one that had to be made in order to come up with a balanced budget. Again, I feel very fortunate the city of Delray Oaks isn't in that position. It's always tough to lay off people. I also want to note that as Mayor Delgado inquired of the, of Tim Flanagan, our manager of the landfill. the layoffs really weren't, wouldn't have been necessary had the unions agreed to a temporary, and again, underscore the word temporary, deferral of colas and any pay raises that are built in. The union decided not to do that and that forced management into a undesirable situation where they've decided they had to lay off people in order to meet their budget requirements. I also want to point out that the last chance mercantile, while again, a very popular program, the place seems to be always busy, it's been closed primarily because of COVID-19 and the fact that, you know, you're going to have customers in the store walking very close to each other. Some of those things have obviously been worked out with retail stores now and we can probably do that with the last chance mercantile too. But it came down to that was the fruit that had to be picked and, and they're the ones that are going to be laid off or have been laid off. So the store, last chance mercantile, as a matter of fact, loses about $500,000 a year. So other activities at the landfill have to subsidize that operation. Tip fees. Tip fees are a primary source of income for the landfill. And as I told you, the amount of material moving into the landfill has decreased significantly. We have not had a tip fee increase since 2018. This year, the board approved last Friday, a tip fee increase effective July 1st. Will go from solid waste, will go from $62 a ton to $65 a ton. Green waste will go from $40 to $42 a ton and other increased to similar. So slight increase in tipping fees. I think it works out to 5% actually. What this means for us as businesses and residents in Delray Oaks, nothing, at least this year. Again, next year, when Dino has to sit down with green waste recovery and negotiate, they'll take a look at the actual costs and adjust tipping fees accordingly. And Dino, I, I don't really know what, this year, there was no tip fee increase for, I mean, residential increase, right? Is that correct?
There was a uniform increase across the board. I don't believe it was a tipping fee increase.
Okay. So minor impact on us and, and, oh, the voluntary early retirement. Again, that's one of those things that, you know, there's, there's a blessing to it. The blessing goes to the people that accept it because they get a nice incentive to retire a little bit early. The hard thing is that many of those people are the ones with all the experience and we've lost some very significant and hardworking people at the landfill. Bottom line is landfill's still open for operations. You can still go out there and take your hazardous waste material out there. I did that the other day. Took some paint and other chemicals out there. You cannot take out your electronics and other stuff, but there are other options for that. For example, I took my other items that I needed to get offloaded. I took them to Goodwill and they were happy to receive them. That's the end of my report and thank you very much.
Thanks, Dennis. John?
So, so Monterey One had this, had a similar budget. We had a special budget meeting, kind of, it was a four hour meeting just around the budget. And we had a lot of the similar outcomes as Dennis reported at the Waste Management District, we had at our own. Monterey One is seeing a 20% default rate, which is the worst case scenario that we, that we hope, we would not pick. We, we had 5, 15 and 20% and, and we are seeing 20% default rate on, on our customer payment. That dominoes through, that effect kind of ripples through our, our cash reserve in what we have available. And at the 5% estimated default rate, we would only be, we, we would be at our limit. At the 15%, we would be 50% into our cash reserve limit and at the 20%, we would be 100% into it. And that, so that, right now, we anticipate by the end of the fiscal year to be $5 million in the hole within our cash reserves. So that's, and, and for our organization, you know, we need our cash reserves when we, when we have emergencies, when we have spills or, you know, broken pipes and things like that. We have a 35-year-old system and so that happens frequently. So that's, we're a little, well, we're very concerned about that. In response, we, we approved an emergency rate hike of $2.50. We really needed to, to raise it about $28 to build, to build. But all, all we, all we could basically do out of the, get out of the board was, was about $2.50 a rate hike. That will hopefully, focused in the right areas, give us, give us the ability to respond to, you know, emergencies. And so, so that, that was in there. We also had wage cuts at the management and executive level and, and unlike at the Waste Management District, labor accepted cola freezes and, and pay raises, which we had just finished negotiating. So, so that was, you know, it was very, it was very surprising and, and very much appreciated. And, and, but it also avoided layoffs, which was, which was, you know, that was the goal. So that's where we are on the budget. Monterey One, we also had a, we had a recycle water committee meeting, which left, was kind of a dire, was a dire public water, or not public water, no, Pure Water Monterey Project update. Right now, where we are with the, with the, I guess, we're, we're still calling it the shake, not the shakedown, but we're still calling it, running through the punch list and the commissioning of the project. Right now, if we do nothing, the capacity of the recycle water project would be about 2, 2200 acre feet, which is, we, we expect, we, or the, the project's capacity is, has an expected capacity of 3,500 acre feet. So we're a little greater than half. We are nine months behind in the implementation. We've not banked away our operating reserve of 1,000 acre foot and we're $5 million into our contingency, which is, that's our limit. We have no more contingency. So any more money, we would be officially over budget. We're facing, we're facing an estimated $11 million in additional needed funds to, to drill basically another deep well. Our shallow Vedos wells, which, which are supposed to inject about 45% of our total waters are completely shut, shut down. Our deep wells are operating at 60% injection. And how that affects the cost of water is if we did nothing, or not, sorry, that, if, if we were producing 3,500 acre feet and we had been on budget and on, on time, our cost of water was estimated at $1720. $17, $1720 per acre foot. If we did nothing, at the $2,000, at the 2, 2200 acre foot per year, our cost of water would be close to $4,000 an acre foot. So in, in terms of options and what to do with, with our, with our project moving forward, do we, do this $11 million investment? Do we drill another well and potentially bring, and try to get, try to get the project back to 3,500 acre foot? If we did nothing and just accepted the annual capacity of 2,200 acre foot, our cost of water would be, would be close to 4,000 acre feet, or $4,000 per acre foot. After the potentially $11 million investment, assuming everything, we will likely be north of $2,800 per acre foot. And we will hope to get that down to $2,400 to $2,600. Because there's a $4 million federal loan that we, or federal grant that we have won but has yet to be released. So that could potentially go a long way in offsetting at least the cost of the well. The, the long and short of it is that we're, we are going to finish this project. We're going to get the project in the ground and we are going to get the 3,500 acre foot. There's just no other, there's, there's no option. We, we have to get 3,500 acre foot. CalM needs 3,500 acre foot. Our, our water portfolio needs it. It's just, we don't know when we're going to be able to finish the project and we don't know how much it's going to cost. So, so that was kind of, and that was, I mean, it, it was a, it was a, a pretty damning recycle water committee meeting, but very, it was very needed. Actually, if, if, if everyone gets in a room and is honest about kind of the current status of a project, then you can make real decisions. But if everybody's just giving, if, if, if you're waiting to hear the status of a project and you're, and you're, you know, there's a lot of platitudes and a lot of, a lot of, I guess not the truth, not, truth is not the right term. If, if people are just not very honest, then it just takes longer for, takes longer for people to make tougher decisions. And, but now, we are now at that point. And so that was, I think, a very, very helpful meeting and I'm, I'm glad we had it. On the waste, what is it, the, on the Seaside Water Master, we have a tack meeting. Really, the biggest thing that came out of that was the water master, Mr. Jenks, had a lot of questions in the, in the Pure Water Monterey expansion project, Appendix SEIR, which was the, the capacity of the expansion project and how it would, would benefit the basin. In the SEIR, it was analyzed using an older model, using the existing model that was in the initial DIR. We don't, we used the same hydrogeologist, Montgomery, Montgomery and Associates for the water master. And so that we, the, the water master had a question, why is there a disparity in the, in the, in the methodology? Why, why is it in the SEIR, we're analyzing it one way, but yet when we get a report from you guys, we analyze it another way, which is a newer, more revised, revised model? And the answer was, and it, it took this long to basically get it from Montgomery, was, well, because the SEIR had, had, needed to use the, for consistency's sake, the SEIR had to use the modeling that was used in the initial, the initial DIR. What we really needed to do, or what the SEIR needed to do, was to change its modeling to, to the more revised, more revised model. So it took a long time for that to come out, but that's, that's one of the things that we discussed. We also discussed doing some modeling, some additional modeling on the, the no-decel option going forward in, in the chance that there is no-decel and what the impacts are going, quantifying what the impacts will be to, to the, to the basin. And in, just back of the envelope, the hydrogeologist was there and talking to us and he's, I mean, his, his assessment was it's zero sum. It's a pie. The, the decel plant has a, has a demand, or has a, has a capacity, a delivery capacity. There is the, the, what the mass, the, the basin needs a certain amount of water for protective, for protective levels. If you produce less water, you will, you, you will have impact on the, on the basin. And, and the only way to change that is to change the, it changes the demand curve. And that's exactly what the water, what the Water Management District did. And so, and there's a lot of question on whether or not that, that was necessarily a good thing to do. It might show what, what, what we as a community use now, but it certainly doesn't help us and certainly not a conservative estimate. And it doesn't, it doesn't allow for the additional capacity that the, that the basin is going to need. And that's the thing right now, is that the basin has been quiet in this whole thing and we have a 740 acre foot, 744 acre foot in lieu pumping that was 10 years ago determined to be that, that, that offset or that in lieu pumping would get us to a protective ground level elevation, groundwater elevation. That's not, that's no longer the case. We're going to, we need to be closer to doubling that, about 1,500 acre foot. And none of the projects in the, in the water portfolio that are being proposed have that additional capacity. And so there is a very, very real impact to, to the, to the basin. And we, I think, as the basin, have not been affected in kind of conveying that to, to the people. It, it's not been part of the dialogue. So that was one of the things that's come out and, and as, as a result, we're going to, we're going to try to quantify that and get it in a report so that we can start adding that information, that piece of information to this overall water, water portfolio, water space dialogue. And so that's really kind of it. Oh, no, FORA. So FORA, all the great news, you know, we, we got our money. I mean, that's, that's great. Really, the last year, that is all Dino and I have been working on, is trying to get our money. We knew that this day was coming, that the FORA was closing. We knew that they owed us or, or that we were, we were entitled to about $10 million. And it's literally taken a year for them to finally approve it, get it to us and, and get it into a form that, that can be transferred. So Dino, thank you so much for bird dogging that and getting that, you know, in there. Thank you. Last week was supposed to be our last meeting, but as, nothing in FORA is ever easy and, or settled. The last basically remaining business item that FORA has to take care of, that, that has direct impact on us, is the TPI, which is the Transition Plan Implementing Agreement. They, just to cut to the chase, Marina and Seaside just do not need them. They don't feel they need them. I think we, I think we need ours, but the issue is that it has to be unanimous decision by FORA in order for it to be implemented. I personally have been trying to, every, every meeting, just taking staff recommendations and get, and getting the, the Transition Plan Implementing Agreement passed and have been roundly shot down. So we have one more bite at the apple on a special meeting on Friday. It's the only business item. Hopefully, we'll get, we'll get a majority. And if it, if it is a majority, then we'll still need a second meeting and that meeting has to come sometime. It has to be either, and we only have two other days to basically, the 29th and 30th are the, are the very last days that we can, we can actually have that meeting. So it'll be just interesting to see whether this thing gets, you know, the clock runs out on this or if it just gets denied outright on Friday. So, so that's, stay tuned for that. And it should be interesting parliamentary kind of entertainment. It's for, for all who want to, or want to enjoy. And that's it. That's my report.
Thank you, John. Louise, did you want to say anything in addition to your written report?
Just a couple items. Anybody's interested, my written report is part of the agenda package. I did mention that there was going to be a, a special meeting of the Northern Salinas, Northern Salinas Valley Mosquito Abatement District last Friday, so it did not get into the packet. It was a very short meeting. It was, had to be held because there was a typo in the local paper announcing public comment on the assessments for the next fiscal year. And because the date was incorrect, we had to give the public an opportunity to speak on that, on the date that the newspaper had printed, which was Friday. We held the meeting by Zoom and there was no public comment. Yeah. Other than that, there is nothing significant to report. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. Pat?
Thank you. At the Seaside Sanitation, we approved the proposed annual operating budget for the year We also approved the first reading of the introduction of an ordinance amending the Seaside Code, Chapter 4.15, permits and inspections to amend the connection capacity fees. Community Human Services. Firstly, I'd like to thank the staff and the council for approving the JPA Delray Oaks with the Seaside Community Human Services and also for the special donation for Casa de Noche Buena. That is a partnership with the Gathering for Women organization. And it's, it's for the families. So it'll primarily be women, but they will perhaps have men who have children and so on. And that, I went over to Gathering for Women and took a tour. This was before the pandemic, but, and I can just see how the two organizations really complement one another. So I'm glad that Delray Oaks and all of you chose to support that. I was on the nominating committee for the board officers for the coming year and we nominated the existing officers. Alana Miles, who is a resident of Delray Oaks, she is chair and she is with the Monterey Peninsula. Alana Miles, who is a resident of Delray Oaks. She is chair and she is with the Monterey Peninsula School, uh, District. Vice Chair Carl Samuels is North County and Finance. And Annette Stack is, uh, the, uh, the Finance and she's with the Carmel Unified School District. And they have all accepted. So that was a relief. I attended the, um, board meeting where we approved the operating budget for fiscal year 2020 dash 21. And the CEO, uh, Robin McCray announced the virtual groundbreaking ceremony for Casa de Noche Buena. It is planned to be opened by, uh, November of this year. She also announced that the Community Human Services will be participating in the 100 Day Challenge. This is something new to me. I hadn't heard of it before, but I understand it is a growing national movement to prevent and end youth homelessness in America. And Community Human Services will be working together with other organizations to collaborate, innovate and execute a coordinated community response to end youth homelessness. This is an unfunded, unfunded initiative. However, participation in this will position our community for a homeless youth demonstration project grant, which could bring in over a million dollars for homeless youth. This has been a good fundraising year for CHS, but next year is expected to be a very difficult one. CHS also, um, I attended a modified strategic planning, um, where the virtually it didn't work out as well as, as with the one-on-one basis as we've done previously. But the successes and challenges for the past year were presented by the management staff and then also by the board, board members, uh, how we felt about it. Um, and one of the greatest successes was the Casa de Noche Buena and the challenges, um, are, are financial uncertainties. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kristen?
Hi, good evening. Uh, yeah, I attended MST, um, where we received and adopted a, um, 2021 final budget. Um, it was pretty easy to, to adopt the budget as we did receive quite a bit of money for, from the CARES Act. Um, the rights are down. Everything, everything is down. It's, it's, uh, you know, a very difficult time as we've heard from, um, all the other council members. Budgets are just, are tough right now, but thank goodness MST did receive some money. So this year we are doing okay. Um, we have not laid off a lot of people. We still have to keep the buses going. So buses still have, you know, we still have to maintain the, the staff. Um, and so thank goodness we have the CARES money right now. Um, we approved federal grant application resolution, authorizing the filing of federal grant applications and authorized applications for the fiscal year 2021 state transit funds. Um, so, uh, we rely a lot on grants at MST. So, um, that's the, the highlights of my meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, so for the mayor's report, it has been another extremely busy, uh, month with no signs of slowing down. Um, in response to the recent tragic death of George Flynn, I, like many other mayors across the, um, the country have signed the My Brother's Keeper Pledge, um, to review our use of force policies. Um, I want to acknowledge our chief in this process. We're working together and he's been answering my myriad of questions. Um, as I dig into the review of our, uh, policies, I also want to commend him for being proactive, uh, dialoguing with the public and online messages and Zoom conversations and making himself available to, um, explain what our department is doing and, um, has been doing. So thank you. Um, and I will be, uh, there will be more coming out about the, uh, the pledge that I signed. I'll be asking for community input and, um, and so there will be more coming on that. Um, I, uh, attended, of course, the special council meeting on June 9th here when we were, uh, looked at the sign ordinance as well. Uh, we've had two sign ordinance subcommittee meetings, um, that include, uh, councilperson Gagliotti, planning commissioners Krieger and Wood, residents Mary Truxes and Kim Shirley. So, um, uh, lots of work, but we've kind of slowed things down. Now we realize that, um, timing was a little different than we thought. Um, uh, like Dino mentioned, Steph and I have met with the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership to discuss a housing presentation for our residents. The vice mayor and I worked together on the city manager annual review and process, which we will be discussing in, um, closed session. I attend weekly executive level meetings with supervisors, other mayors and other senior leaders in the county to receive updates on COVID decision-making, um, and, uh, opening concerns. At one meeting, we heard from the Monterey County Office of Education about the nuances, um, and difficulties with opening up schools in the fall, taking into account the assortment of districts, different start dates, um, and approaches. We have a lot of educators in Delray Oaks and I just want to thank them for all of their hard work over the last couple of months, um, let alone a pandemic and, uh, what will prove to be challenging in the fall. Excuse me, mayor's meetings are now occurring every other Friday. Um, again, generally focusing on COVID, but also there's a lot of talk about budgets and activities of other boards where a mayor is appointed. Uh, the mayor's water authority, uh, met this morning where we voted unanimously to begin to disband, uh, the JPA. This has been our first meeting this fiscal year and, um, we just can't justify the costs involved with this JPA anymore. So, uh, we'll be bringing a resolution to the council at our next meeting. Um, those will be rotating throughout all of the cities and then we'll go back for one final meeting to, um, wrap it up. There may be, uh, we're trying to do it as quickly as possible. So there's fewer, um, uh, expenses involved that we have a little pot of money left over. And so we would all, um, many of the cities would greatly benefit from whatever they can get back, um, from that JPA. Uh, I continue to do, uh, community campfires, one of which was attended by, um, Officer Guzman, uh, to discuss, oops, sorry, and answer questions about our policing. Sorry, I have dogs. Um, I am moving these to every other week. Um, if you're interested in joining, please let me know. Um, we had a monthly, uh, mayor's advisory committees on art and culture to discuss logistics about our next annual DRO artist showcase. Um, with the pandemic, we may be moving it to, um, the January, February, March timeframe versus the end of November, just, uh, taking into account, uh, the safety for all, um, attendees and artists. Um, you know, what's kind of fun right now is being able to just drop in on any, uh, Zoom public meetings. So, um, I was able to attend the Monterey Regional Parks District Board meeting, um, where they were discussing foretag and an agreement with TMC. There was discussion about ownership. Who owns the final design for the path going through their jurisdictions as it touches the various jurisdictions? Um, after a lot of discussion, the board unanimously approved the, the, um, agreement with TMC. Um, I attended the Monterey County Office of Sustainability to understand, uh, what they're doing. Um, they had just recently completed a study and are looking forward to what, uh, would benefit the county. Um, I also attended a Beacon New York Community Climate Resilience Vision Process, uh, just to watch their public process and how they do it. Um, and they did a wonderful job in an hour online. Uh, lots of interesting interaction. Uh, also attended Monterey Peninsula Housing Coalition to see, uh, what steps we can, uh, take moving forward. Also attended one of the Monterey One Water Board meetings, uh, because water issues are critical for our community. Um, and then some fun things I got to do. Uh, I participated in a graduation drive-by for one of, uh, Delray Oaks high schoolers, uh, which was fun to be able to, uh, clank pots and pans and congratulate this young, uh, young man from, to graduate. Um, I recently joined a neighborhood book club that focuses on personal biases. Um, uncomfortable and important discussions are, are happening with neighbors. I attended, um, the silent vigil put on by the Delray Oaks Neighborhood Watch, uh, with, uh, neighbors and staff. Thank you for, for coming. I also attended two Black Lives Matter protests, one in Monterey and one in Seaside, as well as the Juneteenth Celebration in Seaside. These gatherings were well organized and well attended. Um, and, uh, I have TMC tomorrow morning and then on Friday, um, I'm going to go on a ride along with, uh, Officer Nguyen. So I'm looking forward to that. So that's it for my report. Um, so we're done with the reports. Uh, the correspondence, I just want to note, um, the MST board meeting highlights as well as the TMC board meeting highlights, if you'd like, uh, for your, uh, reading enjoyment. Um, and then lastly, uh, we're going to move into closed session. So what I'd like to do is open it to public comment on the closed session items. Anyone wishing to address the city council, um, may do so now. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this public comment period. So, um, I see Nikki's hand. Nikki, please.
Okay, I am unmuted. Thank you. First of all, thank you very much for, for letting us speak to this item. And I just really admire your stamina. Thank you. Uh, my name is Nikki Nedith. I am the past president, speaking on behalf of the Monterey Bay Chapter of the California Native Plant Society. I'm hoping that you were able to look at, at least receive and read the advanced materials that I sent over yesterday. Uh, Delray Oaks has some very important decisions to make about the South Boundary Road project that the city is going to live with forever. Uh, city council members, again, I hope you've had a chance to read the advanced materials. Um, they were also sent to Mayor Kerr and City Manager Pick. A very important point I'd like to make tonight from the get-go is that Delray Oaks, the California Native Plant Society and FORA all agreed back in March 2000 on the size and the location of a plant reserve that was to be set aside as sequin mitigation at the corner of South Boundary Road and what was then North-South Road. The plant reserve covered the entire parcel that was later labeled by the Army E29A1 before they divided it from the adjacent development parcel and then transferred it to FORA. I have maps. Um, I have minutes of field meetings where everybody agreed that this parcel was going to be the, the California Native Plant Society Reserve. That dates back to the year 2000. That map is really the only map that everyone has agreed to and it's 20 years old. That's the map. Those are the acreage figures and the boundaries that CNPS has been depending on for the last 20 years. That property, California Native Plant Society calls Plant Reserve One North. Everybody agreed to that. Again, we have the records that go back 20 years. The current design of South Boundary Road severely impacts that Native Plant Society Reserve, that Reserve One North. That was supposed to be set aside in perpetuity as mitigation for road improvements on what is now General Jim Moore Boulevard. Those were back in the late 1990s. This habitat land has been protected both as sequin mitigation, but also through a contract that Delray Oaks has with FORA and the Cali, uh, California Native Plant Society. And that specifies there should be protected in perpetuity a minimum of two acres. Then there was the buffer of an additional two acres specified in the sequin mitigations for the General Jim Moore Boulevard work. All that summary material that was provided to you in advance of tonight's meeting describe the background for that issue. Now, the origin of our conflict stems from the fact that the California Native Plant Society was never consulted about the status of Plant Reserve One North prior to the development of plans for South Boundary Road. We started asking in writing from FORA for clarification back in 2017, when it became clear that the proposed, uh, proposed road was going to go right through the Native Plant Society Plant Reserve. We asked again in writing in 2018 and again in person at an August 2018 FORA board meeting, when we reminded FORA that the SEQA mitigation for the General Jim Moore Boulevard improvements stated that this was supposed to be protected in perpetuity. In addition, the SEQA document for South Boundary Road stated that the South Boundary Road design was contingent on having the Native Plant Society move the reserve. We had to agree to that. That was specified in the SEQA document. So here we are in 2020, after for three years having tried to get from FORA some kind of determination on the status of the Native Plant Reserve, that's going to be completely obliterated by South Boundary Road. So now the city is stepping into the FORE's shoes. Uh, you're accepting FORE money. You're accepting the road project and it appears that the city intends to use the same road design and also add a roundabout. Now, the city doesn't have to move forward necessarily with the exact same project. FORE started this. Uh, in fact, the road project is already different because it's adding a roundabout. So you have differences here from the original project. We're asking you, we're imploring you, the California Native Plant Society Monterey Bay Chapter, saying, please, consider moving this road, considering moving this new additional roundabout to the north to entirely avoid the rare plant habitat in Plant Reserve One North. The northerly road alignment is superior for many, many reasons as outlined in your advanced materials. And in the long run, you know, it may cost less. Yes, redesigning and analyzing the new alignment will cost money, but in the end it may cost less. First of all, you're going to avoid that reserve. Yeah?
Nikki, um, uh, we're beyond time.
Okay, well, you get the message. Um, happy to meet with you. We're happy to, uh, do a, a presentation to your, to your residents, share the materials we have. We're surprised the city does not have records of the maps and the minutes of these meetings, um, and ask you in closed session to please consider moving the alignment north. So thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Um, Douglas? Douglas?
It's Alice Green. Sorry.
Sorry, Alice.
The little arrow on my screen wasn't appearing, so I was having trouble unmuting. Thank you. Uh, my memory fully supports the California Native Plant Society's position regarding its parcel at the General Jim Moore and South Boundary Road intersection. I personally am extremely dismayed that CNPS finds itself having to argue over a parcel agreement that the city has publicly and repeatedly confirmed as settled. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Uh, Gary Krieger?
Hi, this is Katie Krieger and I'm speaking on behalf of Patrice Vecchione. Um, Patrice says, "As a longtime resident of Delray Oaks and someone who recognizes our responsibility to keeping commitments and to the importance of the California Native Plant Society and to our role as stewards of this place, I wish to express my fury that there is even an iota of consideration of, let alone a plan, to place a road through one of the native plant reserves that was to be protected in perpetuity. I'm asking the council to keep your commitment to protecting this reserve. If there is to be a road, though, I find the reasons for it to be missing. Find another route." Patrice Vecchione.
Thanks, Katie. Thanks, Katie. Kim Shirley?
Hi, everyone. Thank you, council. As the co-chair of Sustainable Delray Oaks, yesterday I received an email from Nikki Nedeth, sorry, a member of CNPS. She shared with me the letter that was sent to the council, and I was able to have an email exchange with her to further understand the history of this plot of land, as well as their position. Hearing these details from the CNPS point of view surprised me. It was always my understanding, based on conversations with our city manager, that CNPS was not interested in working towards a solution. After reading through their letter, it seems that there is a solution that creates a win-win for both parties. CNPS is looking to preserve their unique plot of land, which is rightfully theirs, which includes rare and endangered plants. Delray Oaks is looking to rebuild South Boundary Road in a configuration that makes it safer at the intersection of General Jim Moore Boulevard. Moving that intersection further north not only satisfies our needs, but it also preserves the habitat, which is important to the ecosystem. I do realize there is a long-sorted history to this plot of land. I've seen different maps depicting this variation in the plot size. Regardless of the size, it alarms me that DRO's position was that they were willing to fight to put this road through this plot of land that was always intended to be saved. Even though the initial study got it wrong by using the incorrect map, it doesn't mean it's okay for DRO to move forward and not own up to the original intention of this preserve. I like to think as a community, we can see value in preserving this plot of land and being good neighbors with CSNPS. It might cost us more money and time, but I believe ethically, we should do the right thing and work with CNPS so that we can arrive at a solution that works for both parties. They get to protect a very important habitat, which benefits all of us, and we'll get a road that is safer than the road that currently exists. Therefore, I ask the council to look into this more northern alignment for South Boundary Road. Thanks.
Thanks, Kim. Ken Rutherford?
Thank you. As you go into closed session, I just encourage each of you, council and staff, to consider the larger issues being presented with respect to potential CNPS litigation. How best to proceed regarding the former foreared land and resources now that FORE is no more, and whether we are willing to sacrifice our city's integrity for gamesmanship that will ultimately serve to diminish our standing in the community and is contrary to the stated core values of Delray Oaks. Unlike our neighbors to the south Monterey Airport, CNPS is not seeking unwanted expansion into Delray Oaks or to undertake projects that would diminish the quality of life that we have come to know and love here in Delray Oaks. To the contrary, they are simply demanding to be allowed to fulfill the responsibilities that they have so nobly agreed to undertake when they were made the perpetual caretakers of this most precious endangered habitat that we residents of Delray Oaks are actually lucky to have in our own city. Supporting or encouraging actions on the part of this city to challenge the ownership and the boundaries of the CNPS parcel and the habitat that they protect will be a decision that will forever follow you and follow our city, not just tonight, but forever. We should not be looking for ways to reduce the amount of protected space in our city and this habitat, but rather looking for ways to increase and expand the CNPS habitat and parcel to be protected in perpetuity. CNPS has taken on a most important responsibility of preserving this unique and important habitat, and I'm sure that they will rightfully fight, as necessary, to fulfill their fiduciary duties in this regard. It will be shameful if Delray Oaks, through you as our elected leaders, choose to become an obstacle that requires them to expend precious resources, theirs and ours, to fulfill their obligations and responsibilities. I ask you to do what is right, what is ethical, and reject any suggestion that would require CNPS to undertake unnecessary actions in order to meet their duties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Gary, did you have your hand up?
Yes, that was reading before. I guess I did have a brief comment.
Okay.
Thank you. First, I understand litigation needs to be discussed in closed session. However, a great deal of information's been provided by the California Native Plant Society in their dealings with FORE, especially recently. It's been going on, it's going, which is going soon to be dealings with us, as we've noted. We're going to be inheriting all that. Reading through the California Native Plant Society documents, it seems as though there are some reasonable questions that need to be answered about the routing through an area with endangered species. I would just hope that we're going to start getting information, from our perspective, made public soon, so we can start to compare.
We lost to Gary, or I did.
To more information documentation from our side that will help clarify this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Karen Harris? Karen?
Mayor Kerr.
There you go.
And city council members. I just wanted to say that I am so in support of the California Native Plant Society and want to protect the land that is in due and perpetuity to them. So it's all been in our history for many years, for over 20 years. It doesn't matter if it's been one diagram or another diagram. We know it's there. And we don't want to have a road running right through it. And that's what we are going to support, to protect this endangered species. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Dennis?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'm a little surprised that there's some information out there. I would have liked to seen this information that apparently select people got to see before this goes into this closed session. So I'm disappointed that other people didn't get an opportunity to see the letter from the Native Plant Society. But overall, I think this is just a matter that's going to get worked out by the city council and the Native Plant Society. It's been a long understanding that there was that parcel of land over there. We, at one point, there was this thing called the Barlich Curve, which was routed around that area to keep it preserved. I'm sure that we're going to come to some sort of equitable resolution to this. I'm very hopeful of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Nikki, we can do one more minute.
Okay, I guess I just have a question. Did the city council members, you and city manager PIC, receive the material that I sent yesterday? Yes. Okay, and that should be part of the public record, I guess.
Unfortunately, it wasn't received before the packet was sent out. So we did all receive it.
Okay.
But the packet was sent out last week.
Oh, early. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So how can you share that with members of your community?
I can address that, mayor.
Thank you.
I mean, it is a public record, Nikki. And quite frankly, I'm very much looking forward to sharing much more information than that with our residents as we continue this important dialogue. We've just taken this project over last week.
Right.
And so that information will be part of a lot more information that we provide, both to our public and our council as we progress, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Any other public comments about any of the items on closed session? Okay, on that, we're going to adjourn the open session. And for the council to go into closed session, we will come back out after, and our city attorney will report out.